Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, February 17. Will you please rise with me and say the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross is out of town right now, so Dr. Baker is standing in for him as our secretary. Will you please take your role, Dr. Baker?
Yes, I will. Pastor Moody?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Dr. Randles?
Present.
Mr. Ross is not here. Ms. Slade?
She is also excused.
Dr. Baker is here. Ms. Legrand?
Angry at the snow.
Is here and angry. Mr. Mathias, Reverend Mathias is not here. And President Faal.
Present. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
The motion.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. First on our agenda is the celebrations.
Thank you. I would ask President Faal for Irma Lopez to come forward. Thank you.
Esteemed board members, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Berthel Archie, who is a prior GRPS board member and also on the Michigan Workforce Development Board of Directors. The Workforce Board is the visionary and sponsor of the Kent County and Allegan Essential Service Award. Berthel is a registered nurse, faculty of the University of Phoenix, and in clinical practice with Nursing Care Force.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez, for that nice introduction. So, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to give praise and honor to God Almighty, as he is worthy to be praised to President Wendy Faal, board members, Superintendent Teresa Wetherall-Neal, staff, faculty, and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to participate with you to acknowledge and honor one of your employees, Ms. Cynthia Johnson, sitting to my left. Also, Ms. Johnson, who is receiving the Essential Service Honor tonight, is a member of First Community AME Church, where our pastor is the pastor Gary S. Moore. The Essential Service Award is sponsored by the Michigan Works Kent-Allegan Workforce Development Board of Directors. The Essential Service Award eligibility requirements to be a nominee are: number one, you must have worked with the current employer for at least two-plus years, and you must reside in the Kent or Allegan County. Ms. Johnson certainly does meet that criteria. As a board member on the Workforce Development Board, I've had the opportunity to nominate deserving candidates for this position, and certainly Ms. Johnson, sitting to my left, has met the criteria and beyond. She has served with distinction, in our opinion, both with the Grand Rapids Public Schools and certainly with the community service that she has provided for First Community AME Church. The committee receives many applications. However, Ms. Johnson was selected to receive this great honor, and so we're so pleased that Ms. Johnson was selected to receive this honor. She was also honored at the Economic Club luncheon at the Emway Grand Plaza on Monday, January 27. And Superintendent Teresa Neal was present, and so was our pastor, Pastor Moore, and many others. I was present, and we were pleased to have that opportunity to applaud Ms. Johnson. In Cynthia's role as custodian, she ensures that the buildings and areas that are entrusted to her are clean and glistening, as she has provided some 23 years of custodial services to the Grand Rapids Public Schools and over 10 years of free custodial services to First Community AME Church. She has refused to allow the church to pay her a nickel for her consistent custodial services over the years. I personally know Ms. Johnson. I have had the pleasure of knowing her for over 23 years. She is a very pleasant, quiet, spirit-filled, committed young lady, whom I have enjoyed knowing her for the many years that I've stated. So, I speak from personal experience about the person that Cynthia is. So, on behalf of the Michigan Works Workforce Development Board, the Selection Committee, and First Community AME Church, we are pleased to join with Superintendent Teresa Wetherall-Neal, the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Directors, and all of those that are assembled this evening, as we acknowledge and honor Ms. Cynthia Johnson for her services, both to the Grand Rapids Public Schools and to First Community for 23 and 10 years respectively. It is my pleasure to present Ms. Cynthia Johnson, and if Superintendent Neal would proceed from here.
That's right. Thank you. Good job, Cynthia.
I do have Irma, if you will come forward, please.
This is a gift certificate and a certificate from our Michigan Works program here in the district for Cynthia. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson would like to have a few remarks. Ms. Johnson?
First of all, I'd like to get to God, he's the head of my life. I want to thank everyone here, Ms. O'Neal, the board members, all the staff of GRPS. I just, you know, just do what I do. I do things because of, that's just how I am. And I thank God just for being employee of GRPS. I have had a beautiful 23 years of working here. I thank Michigan Works, Kent County, that gave me the award. I thank Berthel for nominating me. Didn't even think, you know, you just have to be yourself. Just, you don't know who's watching you, who was doing what. Just be yourself, be natural, and God would take over and do everything for you. But I would like to thank Ms. Berthel, and the committee, and everyone for that they gave me this certificate. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, report of the student representative. And we, oh, you're going to have to do the introduction all over, just for me, because I wasn't here at the last meeting to meet this gentleman, so.
This is on help, or it's, you have anything to report?
No, just, everything's going good at Union, the program with, not her name, what is her name? She has a program called the Dropout Challenge, and that's going good. The kids are excited to start them. At first, they weren't so happy because of the title, but then we-
What, the what challenge?
Dropout Challenge.
Oh, Dropout Challenge.
Yeah, where we're going to help out African-American males, just because they're the biggest rate of dropping out. So, this is going good. So, we're waiting for that. I'm also going to be mentoring them.
Okay.
Yep, it's good. Yep.
Fantastic.
Well, thank you. I want to give my personal welcome, since I wasn't at the last meeting when you were introduced. Welcome. Glad you're here to serve. Public comment on board agenda items. Dr. Baker, do we have?
We have one. Public comment for a board agenda item. Albert Prince.
Good evening, Mr. Prince. You know the drill.
This is working. I guess so. Excuse me. Am I part of the drill? Sorry. Yes, thank you. I'm a teacher here at the school district. My name is Jack Prince. I have a number of fellow teachers, some neighbors, some parents of students within the district, that have gotten together in the last few months and talked over things as concerned parents and stakeholders in the district. And it is of that group that I'm here tonight. It is not a group that some of the people felt comfortable coming to this evening's festivities, but in light of the recent listening tour, they felt like they wanted to express a single issue, of which I'm the messenger. I do concur with everything that they have pinned on this letter, so I'd like to read the letter at this time. Dear Superintendent, members of the board, we come to you as concerned citizens, parents, taxpayers, teachers, all stakeholders with a vested interest in the educational progress of students at GRPS. We present to you with a single question, a question we find to be of high importance and relevance today. Question is, why wasn't the recommendation of the Cambridge Education Report of 2013, which stated that teacher compensation needed to be raised to attract and retain the best talent, followed? This question has been raised at previous board meetings and was never answered. This question is even, is of even more importance, as we now see quietly a new round of Cambridge Education consultation with its associated price tag in progress, with assumingly another report of recommendations to follow. We have seen documentation of an expenditure in the year of 2013 of over $970,000 of taxpayer money to this consultation. After spending this enormous amount of money for recommendations which the district, to this day, has not followed, to what objective or purpose could we contemplate spending yet another equivalent amount of taxpayer money? Cambridge Education was piloted in GRPS in the year 2011 by a prominent opponent of public education in our community and a supporter of the voucher system, who has vowed publicly to dismantle the public school system. If one cares to investigate Cambridge Education, which, by the way, has nothing to do with Cambridge University, it is owned by a huge and prodigious corporation called Mott McDonald in the United Kingdom, which has leaders who are involved with charter school operations. Could this money not be spent for better purposes, such as hiring more teachers to reduce class size and to increase teacher pay to attract and retain the best teaching talent available, or to keep open beloved school public buildings? At the time of Cambridge Education's recommendation to increase teacher pay, GRPS is found to be the lowest district for teacher pay in the county. According to the Grand Rapids Press article of September 2013 entitled "Who Is Teaching the Teachers?", GRPS remains the lowest pay scale for teachers in the county, and is considerably lower than the next lowest-paid district. How can Superintendent and board justify spending nearly a million dollars for a consulting firm when our teachers continue to be the lowest paid in the county?
Mr. Prince?
We would very much appreciate your answer to this question by the end of the next board meeting at this very forum. Sincerely signed, concerned citizens and teachers of Grand Rapids Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And to reports. Secretary's report. Dr. Baker?
Two very important events in the month of March. The first is the State of the Schools address, where Superintendent Neal will provide our annual state of our schools on Saturday, March 15, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Ottawa Hills High School, 2055 Rosewood Avenue Southeast. The doors will open at 8:30 with light refreshments. You can RSVP by calling 819-2193, or email dana bialk@bialkd@grs.org. The second event, for everyone to know about, is kindergarten here I come. GRPS is holding its annual kindergarten here I come on March 12 from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. in the Grand Rapids Public Museum, located at 272 Pearl Street Northwest. This is a great opportunity to meet with representatives from our elementary school programs. You'll be able to enjoy a night at the Grand Rapids Public Museum free of charge. Children are welcome encouraged to attend with a parent or guardian. If you have any questions, please contact the Office of Early Childhood Education, Kindergarten, just for your information, kindergarten eligibility for the 2014-2015 school year will be children five years of age by October 1, 2014. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Superintendent's report.
Next, John Helmuth to come forward to introduce our friend from East Hills.
Steal this chair real quick.
Come on down.
Madam Superintendent, President Faal, members of the board, it's an honor to be here to share with you an update, really, on some of the happenings around Congress Elementary and our partnership with East Hills Council of Neighbors, the East Hills Loves Congress, and really, the overall neighborhood school reclamation project that has been part of Superintendent Neal's transformation plan. As you know, during that transformation plan, we looked at a couple different projects, two target areas around Congress Elementary and Mullet Park Elementary. These are looking at these neighborhoods that are fast-growing, fast-evolving, and really, looking at how do we further strengthen our partnerships and reopen ourselves up to the neighborhood, to the community, to the business districts, to make our schools more welcoming, inviting, and again, allowing it to be one that's further reclaimed by the neighborhood. We have had such remarkable progress and success. Some things most recently were, of course, the community school garden was one of the more visible examples, but we are continuing to do our work on various levels, and so we wanted to invite some of our friends to join us tonight. Bridget Chaney, of course, is the principal, who has really been out and about, on the ground, in the streets, working with the neighborhoods directly on this project. And so, I would like to first turn it over to her, so she can kind of give you the school perspective, and then Rachel Lee, who is the head executive director over East Hills, will talk a little bit more about the partnerships, particularly with our friends at Brewery-Vivant, some of the things that they've done to support the schools, the program, and this overall neighborhood school effort. So, Bridget?
Yes, thank you for welcoming us today, Madam Superintendent, President Faal, members of the school board. We appreciate your time today, and we're very exciting, excited. We're just coming off from a fundraiser at Brewery-Vivant this weekend to help get us off the ground with our brand-new Girls on the Run team this year. So, we're excited to have that at Congress this inaugural year. And Mariah, who's sitting right behind me, is going to be one of the coaches. Feel very strongly about this for our third, fourth, and fifth grade girls. Excited to welcome that. So, that's one of the tangibles that you'll see from our partnership with East Hills Loves Congress and Brewery-Vivant as well. We were selected, I guess I'll say, as a school for the State of Opportunities report that Dustin Dwyer did, and I really feel that part of that is due to the partnership that we've had with the neighborhood associations, because we are trying to get the true perception of Congress out there, and had no idea when we opened our doors to him what would come of that, but very, very glad for the report that he put out, the documentary that he put out, and just making everybody aware of the neighborhood school and the reciprocal partnership that we share. Over to you, Rachel.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. At the East Hills Council of Neighbors, we're very excited to be in this partnership with the Grand Rapids Public Schools for the East Hills Loves Congress campaign. Right now, as an organization, we're working on what we call our public space strategy, which includes four components that are very strong in making our neighborhood the neighborhood that it is and pushing it forward for the next 20 years. Couple of things of that is looking at our complete streets and how we can put pedestrians and people first, safe routes to school, safe routes for seniors. The second part of that is our adaptive reuse of new construction. Over the past 10 years, we've seen an extreme amount of interest in private development happening in our neighborhood, increasing foot traffic by 100% every year. Third part of that is our green space and how we are planning and moving forward our vision for our green space and our urban spaces. The fourth part of that is this East Hills Loves Congress campaign. So, it's a guiding document, an intent document, and it's our vision of what we would like to see happen in our neighborhood and happen within our neighborhood school, because we truly believe great neighborhoods have great schools. And so, from all the hard work that Bridget and everyone, all the teachers and everyone at Congress School has done, we're looking at, we're looking forward to continuing this partnership and pushing it forward. All the changes that have happened in East Hills has definitely been a clear vision that's placed people at the center of our planning decisions. We're looking at having a, you know, continue to have and increase a vibrant, walkable neighborhood for diversity of residents and diversity of uses, an urban space with people at its focus, and to provide a full list of amenities for our residents and visitors, which include affordable and diverse residential options, healthy commerce, varied recreational opportunities, multiple transit options, and a first-rate neighborhood school. Thus far this year, we've done quite a bit on working on this campaign. We do have some long-term goals that we'd like to see, but once again, that's intent. That's what our vision is, a neighborhood that we'd like to see, and we're looking forward to opening up this partnership and working with other neighborhoods and other neighborhood associations within the Congress, Congress School area. But just some things that have happened in the last year. We have done the community garden, which has seen great success, including a component for the school as well as for residents, and getting more residents into the building and seeing it. And it's been my, my experience that when a resident or visitor comes into East Hills and goes into Congress School and meets Bridget and sees what's happening, they're very surprised. Their perception that they walked in is not the perception and the reality that they walk out with, and it's due to the hard work of so many people. So, some of our other accomplishments so far in this campaign was getting the building designated a historic building, as well as the whole site for the park. We replaced the, we worked in collaboration to have the soccer nets replaced. We worked in collaboration to have trees planted to add to our urban forestry. We're working on continuing a community survey. We're working on getting a sign, the sign that you see right now on the Lake Drive fence, as well as we're working towards a Baldwin, getting the south doors painted blue, having benches and picnic tables on the playground painted. Once again, the community garden, the community zumba classes in the gym, the Creative Youth Center of Partnering for After-School Creative Writing Classes, and creating strong community and business partnerships, such as the one with Brewery-Vivant. We're very excited to see the participation, active, not only financially, but physical, that Brewery-Vivant has done with Congress School on taking it on. It is these types of partnerships that we hope to continue serve as a model and grow, so that our neighborhood school can continue to have strong partnerships with these businesses. It takes residents, businesses, neighborhoods, people, children, all to be part of this model, to make Congress School the great school, to continue to have it be the great school that it is, and to push it forward to the future. Brewery-Vivant, over the last year, has donated over $5,000 to different initiatives that I've mentioned here before, for the benefit of Congress School, and they've also provided numerous volunteer hours to dedicate to the building, of the garden, and the trees. They did a rake-and-run, where they raked all the leaves up, and so, it's this type of partnership that we look forward to having with other businesses, and we really applaud the efforts of Brewery-Vivant.
That's great. That's very kind. I'm Chris Spaulding. My husband, Jason, and I are the owners of the brewery, and when we set out to open the brewery, which has been open for three years now, it was really important to us to be part of a neighborhood and to kind of become part of the fabric of it and, you know, do things that, take advantage of opportunities to help the neighborhood improve and move forward and all of that. So, it's exciting to have such a great partnership with the neighborhood school and the neighbor council, to be able to do the things that we're passionate about, and those are, you know, strengthening community, which a brewery is a pub, a public place, it's somewhere that totally relies on community. So, a lot of why we do things is because if it weren't for the people supporting us and coming into our doors, we wouldn't be able to do the things that we're doing. So, anyway, we have, we have goals around these things. I'm a very goal-oriented person. I came from corporate America, and I think it helps us to keep our vision in front of us. And then, even more than that, we have this amazing staff. There's three wonderful staff members in front of you, and they're really the ones that are doing a lot of the volunteering work and meeting with Bridget and Rachel and making sure that, you know, we're accomplishing the things that we're able to. So, we're just excited to be part of the neighborhood and to see, you know, what the future holds for us, because this is where we're going to be. That's great. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. Nice. Thank you.
Next on our reports is the NSBA Advocacy Institute. Pastor Moody, and Mr. O'Connor, and myself, and Mr. Helmuth were able to attend this fantastic conference in Washington, DC, and I've asked Pastor Moody if he would report to the rest of the board regarding it.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I took the liberty to jot down a few notes that I thought would be important for us all to hear. First of all, it was a wonderful opportunity for me to attend the National School Board Association Conference, to advocate for the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and to see other individuals from across the country advocate for their schools as well. I met individuals from California, Texas, as far as Oregon, and all are interested in how public school systems are in such disarray. I enjoyed the company of two of my fellow board members, which was Dr. Wendy Faal and John O'Connor, and extremely enjoyed having a conversation with one of our own administrators, Mr. John Helmuth, who I found very interesting, who has a wonderful knowledge about education and has a wonderful knowledge about politics from a local, state, and national level. There were such topics at the conference that I thought was interesting. There were hot topics dealing with federal communication between states and schools. And there was one topic that I thought was very interesting, and that was the vision of public schools from across the spectrum, which indicated that, to some degree, money is a very strong issue when it comes to education, and advocacy for teachers as well. We had the opportunity to meet Congressman Bill Heisenberg, whom we've had dinner with, which was a very wonderful dinner. The next following day, we had a breakfast with Senators Carl Levin and Senator Debbie Stavina, which was very interesting, as Mr. Stavina was really pushing her farm bill. Later on that day, it was passed. The conference gave such highlight with so much information about what needs to be, what needs to be done across the country when it comes to education. There's a lot of work that we all have to do. Also, what I found interesting was that on one of the sessions, I had the opportunity to hear Mr. Bob Woodward, he is one of the legendary Pulitzer Prize-winning journalists who also had a hand in the writings of the Watergate scandal when it came to President Nixon being impeached. He gave a wonderful kudos out to the Grand Rapids, Michigan, in reference to Gerald Ford and what he had to do in reference to that situation with the impeachment or the pardon of our former president, Richard Milhouse Nixon. So, along with my colleagues, John O'Connor, Wendy Faal, and Mr. Helmuth, we thought it was great to hear a Pulitzer Prize winner talk about Grand Rapids, Michigan, and our former president Gerald Ford. Thus, Madam President, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any questions for Pastor Moody or the rest of us conferencegoers? All right. Next on our agenda are action items. First, we have a second reading for policy number 8482. Do I have a motion to support a second, the adoption of policy 8482?
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion regarding this? No discussion? Dr. Baker, can you please call the vote?
Yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
And Dr. Baker, yes. Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
And President Faal?
Yes.
Passes seven. You know what? I'm not writing down the motion. Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
I made the motion.
And then who supported it?
Mr. O'Connor. Oh, was that, oh, sorry, sorry. Pastor Moody.
Got it?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the action item of adopting the purchasing agenda. Do I have a motion to support that adoption?
Some move.
Support?
Support.
Got that, Dr. Baker? Any questions? Discussion?
Just for the record, there is no $970,000 purchasing agenda item to someone that was referred to earlier, so. So it's very important, we're not voting on that. I don't know what that is, but we're not voting on it. Okay. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
And Dr. Baker, yes. And Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
And President Fahl?
Yes.
Passes seven, zero.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Last one of our action items is approval of a recommendation for administrative appointment. Do I have a motion to support that?
Some move.
Support?
Support.
Moving slowly tonight, board. During this discussion, maybe we should have, before I had called for the motion, you'd like to give your verbal recommendation. We, we received Mr., first of all, I want to say I'm very excited and thrilled we have a new leadership here at the helm, and it was wonderful to see gentleman's resume, and I'm excited to hear about it. But would love to get your verbal recommendation.
Thank you very much. Dr. Fob, I would like to just share with the public that I have made a recommendation to the board for a chief financial officer. And those of you that are aware, the person, actually that was executive director of our business affairs stepped down in September, and so thanks to Rhonda Cribs, who has just done a remarkable job in leading us and really steering this district for the past seven months or so in the business office. She's done a great job, but it is really with my pleasure that I would like to ask for approval for the recommendation of Larry, and I'm going to ask that John, I don't know where John is, Sharon, oh, John's in back, and Sharon from HR come forward and talk about what Larry brings to the table. You know, part of the role of the superintendent of this district is to put the right people in the seat at the right time, and it takes time to do that. We have to do our due diligence. I do as a leader of this district, but more importantly, we have to find the right fit, someone who believes, what we believe, which is all children are entitled to the best education that they can get. And so I, I do take my time in finding the right people to join this team, because just anyone can't join the team. And so we need to be careful. But I've asked Larry to join this team. Larry has accepted, and so I'm just pleased for him to be a part of this as we move forward making these changes. So I'm going to turn it over to Sharon, John, and then Larry, please.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. As Superintendent Neal said, we're very pleased to recommend and to introduce Mr. Larry Oberst for the position of chief financial officer. Mr. Oberst has over 20 years of accounting and finance experience. He's worked both nationally and internationally as a certified public accountant at the international accounting firm of BDO. Most recently, he was the vice president of Finance for Spectrum Health Continuing Care, where he managed all financial aspects of their eight post-acute service lines. As you can see from his resume, Mr. Oberst comes to GRPS with a wealth of technical, strategic, and most important, leadership expertise.
And I would just add, you know, this is something that, as we look at our district as a whole and the need for a chief financial officer, and it's important to remind ourselves of the size and scope of this organization. We are the third-largest employer in the city of Grand Rapids, eighth-largest in the entire region with a quarter-billion-dollar budget. We have a highly complex series of funding sources from local, state, federal, private, and various other means in between. And so when it comes to the transformation plan and look at what those key goals were around the transformation, it was looking at how do we invest in and expand what's working? How do we not just focus on cuts, closures, and consolidations? Because that's what we did for 10 years, and it created 10 years of churn and instability and unpredictability. And that also exacerbates our academic and our enrollment challenges. And so this plan, as you know, and you've supported unanimously, takes a different approach, says, no, yes, we're going to have to do some more cuts and closures, and we did that, but we're also going to start to invest for growth and the future success. And that's smart, it's strategic, it is going to require some upfront investments. And so while certainly, you know, we talk about fund balance, we talk about those resources, we are being very calculated in, in that approach and how we do that, and now bringing in an external lens, someone who's, who's had some inside consulting with school districts in his previous life, but also has a pulse for this community and rooted in this community, and can see and feel the momentum and energy around GRPS and this transformation. Now more than ever, it's time to have this individual and to help carry on the vision of the superintendent, that of this board of education. And if you look at, that plan also talked about talent recruitment and retention, and we've got, I've got at least two rock stars right next to me here, one of whom is one of the new, but obviously Larry, with your approval and support, of course, is hopefully there to be part of this team and take it to the next level.
And I do want the board members to know that we did do a national search.
That's right.
And we were very pleased that we actually found the talent right here at home, so that's another really boost for us, but we've searched high.
Well, well, thank you for your kind comments, and I look forward to joining a leadership team here with Superintendent Neal. Ms. Johnson, wonderful job. Can't wait to be part of that team, too. Everyone out there that has an interest in the success of the, the school district. So the more I talk to the leadership, the more I was impressed, to let you know that one of your former board members, Jane Geets, and I worked very closely together at Spectrum for a couple of years, and she's one that really got me interested in, in this particular school district, and that and my heart for, for education, public education and the success of school districts like the public schools of Grand Rapids. So look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Larry. Some questions on the table? Did I have questions, discussion from the board members?
I, I've had the, you know, privilege of working with Larry, so yeah, his knowledge and expertise, it's really going to be exciting to see what he's going to bring and just, you know, his, his relationships in Michigan and certainly across the nation, so it's very exciting. Welcome.
Questions? If not, Dr. Baker, can you call the vote?
Yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Baker, yes. Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
And President Fahl?
Yes.
Seven and nothing.
Welcome to the team.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
You're welcome.
And to us. Right. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda grouping. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move.
Support for that?
Support.
Please call the vote.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Baker, yes. Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
And President Fahl?
Yes.
Seven and nothing.
We have no discussion items. Dr. Baker, do we have a public comment?
Yes, we do. We have three public comments. If you want to come down, Paul Helder, Monica Zavala, and Lamont Cole. So just, we'll, just go ahead and just, this is Ms. Cavala, Monica?
Zavala? Zavala? So you have three minutes, and I will, would you like a one-minute morning when your, when two minutes are up, or? We have a little card, we can give that to you. Do you have that out? We'll do that. All right? Thank you.
Okay. First, I would like to say thank you to Grand Rapids Public School for this opportunity. I already talked about this issue with the communication part, and they answered right away my, my suggestion, but now I, I want your support to encourage the city of Grand Rapids to enforce the law that they need to clean their sidewalks, because our students are walking on the streets, and we all know it's pretty dangerous in this climate. I already called to Grand Rapids City, and I don't see much of response, so I asking for your support if you can help us, the parents, to encourage the city to enforce the law that they need to clean the sidewalks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Cole?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, Madam President, board members, present and past. Good evening. My name is Lamont Cole. I work for Link Community Revitalization. There I serve as a community liaison for the Believe to Become initiative. My school, actually, that I'm responsible for is campus right next door. However, this evening, I came to introduce and bring some of the parents and community stakeholders to this meeting. We are now celebrating what is called our LAST, which is the Link Academy for Social Transformation. Many of our parents and community stakeholders have now gone through that academy and now want to become an active part of the community, coming to not only the Grand Rapids Public School Board meetings, but as well as the Grand Rapids Commission meetings as well. So monthly, you will get a visit from us, no malicious, no malice, just to get parents engaged in this process and to get a better understanding of how this process works. Hands-on experience is the best. So as you see, Monica and other parents and grandparents are here as well. Because of the weather, we did have a smaller group than initially planned, but this is just the first of what will be many trips here.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
And Mr. Halder? Been a long time, Mr. Helder.
How are you?
Good.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will cut directly to the chase here. I had intended to speak a little bit about the, the policy component that you addressed earlier, but I missed that whole portion because it took me almost an hour to get here instead of the 20 minutes it normally takes, 15 to 20. So I will also keep it short so you can get out of here and we can all get home. I just want to make sure, on behalf of our, of our nurses and our other members, that the intent of that policy is merely to clarify the language in the law, and is not to expand any services provided outside of GREA by, you know, let me rephrase that. I just want to make sure we're not moving GREA work to non-GREA personnel in the simplest terms, that we're not asking childcare workers or secretaries or something like that to take on nursing duties or duties that have been traditionally done that way, and I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it up now. The other piece I wanted to mention is that, it's my understanding at the last meeting, that the board took a look at the, the bill by the Senate, which clarified the language around what constitutes a family, and their idea that a single parent with one child was not a family. Setting aside that, that personally, I believe that interpretation to be reprehensible. The fact of the matter is that we talked about this issue during contract negotiations, that we bargained language specifically into the contract, in the insurance section of the contract, that states that we have three categories: single, member and spouse, exactly member and spouse, and nothing else, and family. When I brought this up this afternoon to both Mickey and Sharon, along with the component that a change in the law may not impair an existing contract, that's regular contract law, they, they both were, were happy to hear about the, you know, this possible opportunity to help our people, and they're going to be contacting some of their colleagues tomorrow to, to get another swing at it. So we may not have to do this, and in fact, I, I'm, I'm feeling pretty confident we not only don't have to do it, but we can. So that's good news all around, potentially, but I did want to let you know just how seriously your staff took that and that they're acting on it immediately, and I really appreciate being able to reach out when I find out about something like this and, and get a hold of people right away. So that's it. Cat and Hat comes on March 4th. For those who don't know, NEA and Delta Dental reached out to us here and want to make Grand Rapids their lone stop on their national tour, their lone stop in Michigan, to meet with some of our students and share their love of reading with them. So that's it. Thank you.
Superintendent's comments?
I would like to thank the parents that are here tonight. I think it's really important, in order to change education, we do need people in this community to get involved, so I appreciate you coming and coming forward. We will do all that we can to work with the city on clearing the streets. But that's, that's really important, that you guys continue to come, and you are welcome here at any of our meetings, as well as our committee meetings. You are welcome here. And I also want to thank PAH and GREA, MEA, and NEA for the opportunity to take our students to the Cat in the Hat event, because it could have gone anyplace else, but because of PAH, we are able to offer that to children here in Grand Rapids, and looking forward to that in March, to do that at our university, so should be exciting times.
Reverend Mathias?
You know, Link's work is, is really critical, because a lot of the, the efforts that they made in the four zones, the hope zones, where they worked with various parents, they've gotten really a small army of, of people trained to be able to engage, and, and they actually now know how to do that, which is going to better our schools. It's really, it's really cool to see some of our parents, I know some of them, and so it's really, it's really neat to see them now engaged. They're asking sometimes hard questions, you know, at the, at the local level, but, but good, because they want to be part of the solution, which is, which is really cool, and so they're not just airing stuff, but they're saying, how can we help? So that's cool.
That's great.
Mr. Legrand? Dr. Randles?
I just want to confirm that Dr. Baker will discuss the pay increase that the teachers did receive as part of your comment. It did happen. Yes. Otherwise, I think it's great that we don't have school tomorrow anyway, because it may be snowing, right? So, but will the teachers still have their in-service regardless?
Yes.
Isabel was strategizing tonight. Well, would, then would they have to move that to Wednesday? I said, no, just get your homework done.
Isabel, that's a no. Teachers, you do need to go to professional development tomorrow, even if you're late.
Mr. O'Connor?
Just very excited to, to get to know Mr. Oberst here and see what he has to bring to, to finance.
Dr. Baker?
I will disappoint Dr. Randles, I won't, I won't debate previous public comment. I did think that his comments were a year late, but anyway, I think that, I think that one thing that appears to be true from the vantage point of teachers' union president is that we're working pretty hard to try to make things as equitable as possible, and I think that this board, especially even the work that we did to help with the designation of the health insurance for families, I think, was definitely the work of this administration's board, so I feel like we, I can hold my head up about the work that we're doing to, you know, bring about equitable pay for the teachers. And it, you know, obviously, there's a lot of work that has to be done in lots of places to make that more possible. But anyway, I wanted to talk about, I was going to talk But anyway, I wanted to talk about, I was going to talk about Link also. I think I am really impressed with the work. I think that I actually met you at one of the B2B luncheons last, or dinners last spring, and so it was nice meeting you, seeing again Monica. And I remember thinking then about how much work you're doing and persons like you are doing to make education more accessible for families, and it's pretty incredible what Link is assisting in doing that. And it seems kind of odd at one level to show up and say, we're going to bring people to tell you our perspective, but it's really great. I'm really proud of that. And I think that Superintendent Neal brought up a good point. I think that one place that, that even perhaps more input and dialogue can occur is our committee meetings. And you're welcome to come back tomorrow at 4 o'clock right here. We'll have the Academic Achievement Committee meeting, and then you can discuss, get in more dialogue about what's happening with, with the curriculum, et cetera. So anyway, I'm really glad that you came tonight. Thanks.
I want to thank the board for giving the opportunity to you to attend the conference, and I welcome the new administrator, who's coming aboard as well to work for Grand Rapids Public Schools. And I do believe that this is a very hard-working school board, and I believe that we're on the right track and that there's more to come. Sure, there are some issues and there are some problems, but that's always going to be, so you're always going to be working on something. But I am happy to, to see where we're going and the movement that we're making.
I guess I just want to echo other board members. I want to welcome the parents coming. I'm a firm believer in the Open Meetings Act, and your presence only makes, makes us stronger. So I'm glad you're here, and I look forward to seeing you and others, and thanks for Link with her leadership with it. I want to thank Ms. Johnson for her years of service and, and the perspective and attitude she brings to it, because it takes every single one of us to move those children forward. And I know you've been significant in their lives, and I want to thank you for that. And I want to welcome Mr. Oberst. Meeting adjourned.